Don't let Michael hear that, he might think wrongly unless...
Five hours in tips?
Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Mulligan.
Here.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Lord, please continue to make your blessings shine on our President as he continues to deal with tough issues around the world and we continue to deal with some of the local issues we face as a city and state, continue to give us the guidance to move forward, to handle things in a fair and just manner, and at the end of the day, if we're successful, we will have a better city, state, and nation. Amen.
Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on the daily record on March 25th in order to repeat Council or regular City Council meeting March 29, 2001. A current copy of Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or a pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Resolutions, right, permit, plats and plats, item number five, resolution, permit, plat and title, Southern Valley Replat One, a cluster subdivision located southwest of Seventeenth and Q Streets along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation final plat is hereby authorized, AA, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This development is substantially the same as one that was approved last year. We've reconfigured the northern cul-de-sac with a little bit different geometry, otherwise it's exactly the same as the prior proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. We'll take items six and seven together. Resolutions, department of plat entitled Rogers Ridge Replat Four, located at 1425 Skyline Drive along attached conditions except in preparation, final plat is authorized, AA, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is the replat transmitter here with entitled Rogers Ridge Replat Four is hereby approved, AA, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items six and seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President and members of council, my name is Paul Aaron, 10610 South, 232nd Street. I'm the property owner. This has been two tax lots since the day that I bought it in 1990, and I've subsequently moved from there. I'm trying to separate the two tax lots into two legal lots so that I can sell the empty lot and sell the house on the lot on which it currently sits, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both adopted six to zero. Item number eight is liquor, Dunn Deal Cafe, 2310 North Sixteenth Street, Class C Liquor License, no application, no location, and this is an upgrade.
Public hearing on item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is Myron Kaplan. I'm at 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 300, Suite 500, on behalf of the applicant Dunn Deal Cafe LLC. With me today is Calvin Dunn, Jr., the owner of Dunn Deal Cafe. We are seeking just an upgrade from a C to a C from an I at the request of certain neighbors and patrons. Apparently there have been some losses of liquor licenses in the area, and he's trying to do it as a service to his customers and to the neighbors. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dunn, I just wanted to say I wish you luck. I hope you do it, I hope we take, I hope you can expand and take care of the business the way you've been doing in the past. Good job down there, and we, I just want to wish you a lot of luck, and with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number nine, Field Club of Omaha, 3615 Woolworth Avenue, Class C Liquor License, no application, no location.
Public hearing on item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, here on behalf of Legal Nebraska Beverage LLC. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have a representative here present, if you have any specific questions for him.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted six, zero, one passing. Items 10 and 11 are one applicant for two different licenses, same location. It's Mojo's Smokehouse and Ale, 2110 South 67th Street, Suite 108, Class C Liquor License, no application, new location. And 11 is a catering license for the same applicant, the same location.
Public hearing on items 10 and 11 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, council members, my name's Reynolds McMean, 5010 South 72nd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Along with me today is my son Fletcher McMean and my brother Jason McMean. We invite any questions you have about our operation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I'd like to welcome you to Exarban. Thank you for your investment, and I've been watching you right next to the movie theater. You're putting a lot of money into your build-out.
We're very excited about it.
And wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
For the lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 12, The E.R. Bar, 2236 North 91st Plaza, Suites 26 and 27. It's a Class C Liquor License, no application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, David Pudani, 15578 Wallant Circle, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 13, Fomo Corner Store, 5522 South 30th Street, Package Liquor License, no application, no location.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, here on behalf of the applicants today. The manager and owners are present, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Councilman Jerem's out of the chambers. Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six, zero. Item number 14, Slowdown, 729 North 14th Street, Catering Liquor License, New Application, No Location, they presently hold a Class C Liquor License.
Public hearing on item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, for the record, here on behalf of Slowdown. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six, zero. Item number 15, Fraternal Order of the Eagles at 6607 Sunshine Drive requests permission for an addition to the present Class C Liquor License of a Beer Garden approximately 30 by 38 to the south. There's communications opposing.
Public hearing on item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, council members, I'm David Costello, 2875 Bain Street in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm also a trustee with the South Omaha Eagles at 6607 Sunshine Drive. I'm here to answer any questions and try and alleviate any concerns if someone may have with this.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Put your name on the record.
My name is Dennis Lamb. I live at 830 Bordeaux Avenue in Sarpy County. I'm a longtime member of South Omaha Eagles and a past president there.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Jeff Wegner. It's W-E-G-N-E-R. I reside at 701 Heckberry Road. My wife, Jereen Wegner, owns two houses, duplex properties, that are directly across the street from the subject of this application. Jereen appeared at the prior hearing on this application and unfortunately was unable to attend this afternoon because of a prior work commitment. She did submit a written statement that I hope each of you have and have had a chance to look at. And before I begin my brief remarks, I'd like to thank each of you for your service to the city. I don't get here, obviously, but we're very appreciative of the commitment that you each have made to serve the city and the sacrifices that you make. You each are very experienced in these liquor license matters and public planning matters, and I'm certainly not. I look at this very simply as a property owner, as a taxpayer, and I would ask your indulgence for a moment in looking at this application as a property owner. Would this beer garden application be something that you would like to see open directly across the street from the front door of your home residence? Would that development be in any way, and under any circumstances, however well-maintained and managed that beer garden is, would that in any way be viewed by you as a positive development for your neighborhood, for your home, for your family life, or for your property value? Now, I certainly understand that as property owners, we don't have the right to dictate how neighboring property owners use their property. But this is a unique circumstance where the neighboring property owner doesn't have the absolute right to use its property as it presently is proposing. It needs your special permission. And it needs your special permission to operate a beer garden that I think, again, you would have to acknowledge, however well-maintained, is going to change the character of this very well-maintained family neighborhood. A beer garden by definition will create noise, it will create smoke, it will create other commotion. And again, I will acknowledge and stipulate that the Eagles Fraternal Order has demonstrated that it knows how to maintain a business, and it, my understanding is, it has previously operated a beer garden. But again, a beer garden by definition will change the character of this family neighborhood. So when you have this circumstance where this property owner needs your special permission to change the character of the use of its property, I think what you need to do, and I would respectfully suggest, is to balance the rights of the property owners in the neighborhood against the rights of the Eagles Fraternal Order to open this beer garden. And I guess I would respectfully suggest you ask at least three questions. Do the Eagles need this beer garden to successfully operate their business? And I think the record is clear, it does not. A member of the neighborhood, Mrs. Menusick, has written to your, to the council and has indicated that she has witnessed a very successfully operated business at its present location to the extent that the parking lot is oftentimes full. I think the record is clear that they don't need this beer garden application to successfully operate their business. Secondly, do the members, do the neighbors in this area need this particular beer garden? Again, the record is clear, there's already a beer garden within a block or two of this proposed beer garden. There's a beer garden in operation at Darby's Tavern, Tavern, excuse me, a block, a block and a half away from this existing location. The neighbors don't need another beer garden. There's one there to serve them and their needs if that's how they choose to recreate. And finally, will this beer garden benefit or enhance the neighborhood? Again, I think under any circumstances, however well-maintained this beer garden is, it will create noise, it will create smoke, it will create commotion that is not keeping and keeping with the family character of this neighborhood. Again, if the Eagles truly needed this to operate, successfully operate their business, or if the neighbors truly needed another beer garden, then I think this balancing act would be a little bit more difficult. But the record is clear, the Eagles don't need this to successfully operate. The neighbors don't need this beer garden, they already have one. And so I would respectfully suggest that this application should not be approved, and I respectfully request that you deny the application. Thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Clerk, to your knowledge, the Eagles' previous location had an outside beer garden. Do you recall having any complaints come through your office regarding that location?
Mr. City Clerk, no, I do not, sir.
Okay. Mr. Costello?
Yes, Mr. President.
Just repeat your name for the record.
David Costello.
Will you have live or recorded music at the location of this proposed beer garden?
No.
Okay. It's my understanding and from personal inspection there, this is several feet below grade of the street. Is that accurate?
Currently, the location will be, is already seven feet below 42nd Street on the east side. On the south side, it starts at seven feet below Drexel Street and goes down to approximately, where this will be, down to approximately four feet below Drexel Street. When the fence is added to the top of the railroad ties, now we are 14 feet down from 42nd Street and 11 feet down from Drexel Street. The major change to the neighborhood will be a cedar fence.
So actually, from what, the way that it looks right now, you're adding an enhancement to it?
We're, yes, we're adding a six-foot cedar fence.
Okay. Could we address Mr. Wegner's questions, what we just did one on the enhancement part? With the, an action of the smoking ban, you basically have to provide an area for your smokers. Is that correct?
That's correct. Being a private club, we try to accommodate all of our members, and a good number of our members are still smokers. This is an accommodation to our smoking members. When we're at the other location at 2226 Inn Street and the smoking ban came in, the immediate effect was a loss of about 45 percent of our business. When we got the beer garden back, the business started to come back. While it's true that on Friday and Saturday nights, we're able to almost fill our parking lot sometimes to fill it, we're the new kid. Our building is brand-new. Everybody's coming to see what it's like. We have entertainment on Saturdays. We're going to reach a peak to where business is going to fall off a little bit. That's natural. Without the beer garden, we're going to lose a great deal more business because our smokers will leave to go somewhere else because it's very inconvenient and not a nice situation to have people standing in front of your front door smoking.
What connection do you have with the other local tavern, which was mentioned on public record as Darby's?
Darby's?
Yes.
The gentleman who owns Darby's is a member of the South Omaha Eagles. Other than that, our members go back and forth. We have one gentleman that stops after work, has a drink at our club, goes over to Darby's and has a drink, and then goes home.
Okay.
We're about, believe it or not, somebody actually walked it off, 85 steps from Darby's to our front door. Now, from Darby's Beer Garden to our beer garden, or our area, will be a block and a half. And while Darby's Beer Garden is a wrought iron fence and an open area, ours will not be. Ours will be enclosed by a six-foot cedar fence.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, just repeat your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Dennis Lamb.
Being a past president, as you've mentioned, and at your previous location, when you constructed the beer garden or your smoking area, however, whatever you called it, you're actually, that one was actually closer to residential area than the ones that you're proposing today. Is that accurate?
Yes, it was across a narrow alley instead of a full street.
Okay, and just for the record, did you have to respond to any neighbors' complaints of unruly behavior or anything like that at the time that you were at your other location?
No, we never had complaints about any unruly behavior, noise, commotion. As Dave said, most of our members are older and they don't, they don't get boisterous and loud.
And that's your plan for this particular location, to keep that same demeanor?
Yes, and, you know, the beer garden is kind of a misnomer. I think the State Liquor Commission requires that. We don't plan on having any entertainment out there. We don't plan on serving or selling any beverages out there. The area now is being used as a smoking area. We're just going to shield it and allow people to take their beer out there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I could if you just stay right there. You had mentioned, or your partner had mentioned, the fact that business had went down because of the smoking ban, and now you're trying to bring business back. So Mr. Wegner had said that he didn't think this was necessarily a business need, but just a desire, kind of a frivolous desire. But I understand that you're saying, business-wise, you really need this. Is that correct?
We feel we do for the future. We have, our business has increased now because we have a new location, we're all new and remodeled, have a beautiful place, but we feel it will fall off and our smokers will go elsewhere if we don't get this. Yes, sir.
So you do, you do believe it's a business need?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, thank you. You can be seated. And then, city legal? Mr. Paul Kratz?
I'm Gary, Deputy City Attorney.
Does this council, should we take into, into consideration the whole fact that, that a beer garden would just normally change the character of a, of a neighborhood? Is that one of the criteria we should look at, or is that stepping over bounds a little too?
Well, you, you should look at this in the same way you look at a license, and whether it will have an impact on the neighborhood is one of those considerations. And certainly I would agree that the name Beer Garden is a name that is applied to it by the commission regulations. A beer garden can be a lot of different things. It can be an area that people get served and they spend the whole evening out there. Or it could be just a smoking area where, as they've described it, people have the right to take their alcohol out there with them. Either way, it's going to be a beer garden under the, under the rules. You don't really have any control over which way they go with that, but you can consider how they're going to use this, and that can certainly affect your decision. And I will tell you that because this is an expansion of an existing license, you don't make a recommendation, you have veto power. You decide up or down whether it does or doesn't exist. They can't get this expansion without your approval.
Okay. And then, Mr. Wegner had also mentioned that Darby's, which is a block and a half away, has a beer garden, and the inference there was that there was saturation. Is a, is that a block and a half away, is that saturation? Is that density?
Well, density is something you're allowed to consider, the existence of other licenses. You know, how many licenses are in the neighborhood? How many licenses do you need before you have the saturation or the density as met? It's really up to you. It's a question of whether there are sufficient licenses in the area for people to conveniently obtain alcohol.
Is it, under most of our prior cases, being a block and a half away, that hasn't been defined by this council as dense?
I don't think there's any one absolute definition of what is or isn't dense. Certainly, if you were talking about a new license coming in, existence of a license a block and a half away would be something that we would all consider, and it may, you know, in the circumstances, may be sufficient. With smoking area beer gardens, that may be a little bit less, less important because this is an accessory that may or may not be needed by the licenses that are there, and you're not really adding anything other than adding the accessory to the existing license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Wegner reached out to both you and I initially because this project was in your district, and it is. And Mr. Wegner currently lives in my district, and I indicated to him that I'd just ask a few questions after reading his letter, and I think they have been asked and mostly satisfactory, satisfactorily in my mind. But there was one more question I wanted to ask proponents that I don't think came up yet. If, take the mic there, sir. One of the questions, remaining questions was, even if there was going to be an outdoor beer garden, there appeared to be two options, either the north side or the south side of the building. The proposal right now talks about the south side. Can you comment on why not the north side, which, from the neighbor's perspective, is a little further away from houses?
The north side...
Just repeat your name for the record, sir.
The north side of the building would be much closer to Darby's, our other liquor establishment. In order to put it on the north side, we will have to take up four parking spots. At present, these four parking spots are handicapped parking spots. They're close to the door for our handicap patrons. We would also have to knock out a wall on our building in order to put the beer garden out there. We were informed by contractors, and not just the people that did ours, but I talked to other contractors, that the building inspector frowns on knocking out concrete block walls, and it's much tougher to get building permits. The building would have to be, the way it's configured now, we would almost have to completely reconfigure the inside of our building. Where the door to the beer garden would go is currently the dance floor. If we put the beer garden on the north side, the dance floor's gone. We have to put that somewhere else. Our entertainment is at that end of the building. That would also go, have to go elsewhere. For the south side beer garden, the hallway leading to the beer garden is also the hallway leading to the restrooms. So for people from the beer garden to use the restroom, they don't even need to go through the club. The restrooms are right there, they're convenient for everybody. On the north end, now you have to walk completely through the club to get to the restrooms. So, and the building itself is not very well-conformed for the beer garden out there. If the beer garden would be out on the north end, it'd just be a six-foot fence around it. We would not have the 14-foot separation from the street that we have with the south location.
And you're describing probably a cost element, too, is that, have you...
The cost would be astronomical. In order to penetrate that wall, reinforce it, and do everything to bring it up to city code, the estimates that I've had are anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000. Which, on our budget...
ten to twenty thousand dollars, which, on our budget compared to what we have to spend to put the garden in the back, it's not doable.
Okay.
At the present time, or any time in the near future.
Okay, thanks. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you.
Repeat your name for the record, sir.
David Costello.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of questions, if you could remain there. Did I understand you correctly to state that there will be no seating in the beer garden? Is that correct?
No, we will put, like, resin chairs and tables, like you see out at Ace Hardware, that chairs are about five dollars apiece, and the tables might be ten. A very temporary seating. But there would be seating out there.
So seating for approximately how many patrons?
Maximum, I would say about fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty?
Yes.
Because it's thirty by thirty-eight, it seems like it is a rather, that's a pretty good-sized area.
But you also have to realize the thirty by thirty-eight is from the fence to the fence. Now, on two sides, we have two tiers of railroad ties that take up approximately four or five feet on the east side and the south side. So that goes, plus, we don't get or want huge crowds in the beer garden for the simple reason of the noise, the inconvenience of it, control factor. We'll have an emergency fire exit on the beer garden, and that I'm hoping to have alarmed, so that if someone attempts to leave through the fire exit or come in through the fire exit, we'll know it right away.
And there'll be no service outside? You'll just be able to take a beer outside with you?
That's correct. We will not allow a waitress or a bartender to go out and wait on those tables. If you want to sit in the beer garden and have a drink with your cigarette, when you're done with your cigarette, if you're also done with your drink, you have to get up and go inside and get another drink.
And would you be able to stay outside until 2:00 AM? Do you?
No, we don't even stay open until 2:00 AM, sir.
What time?
We close at 1:00.
1:00. So you could still go outside at 1:00, up until 1:00. Is that correct?
You can go outside until 1:00. But at our establishment, you can't get a drink after a quarter to 1:00.
Okay. All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
No further lights? Second, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved on a seven to zero vote. Consent agenda. Every member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number sixteen through eighteen were held on March 22nd. We have a motion? Second, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers nineteen through thirty-seven begin now. Nineteen through thirty-seven begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Regina Dale with the Omaha Library, here to answer any questions in regard to item number thirty-five.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-eight, ordinance on final reading, special ordinance allowing special tax for sidewalks, SWR 2010-1, A is an amendment.
Public hearing was held on March 22nd. We have a motion on the amendment? Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Second, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed as amended, seven to zero. Now, item number thirty-nine, special ordinance allowing special tax for weeds, group 2011-6, A is an amendment.
Public hearing on item thirty-nine was held on March 22nd. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Item number forty, special ordinance allowing special tax for weeds, group 2011-5, A is an amendment.
Public hearing on item number forty was held on March 22nd. We have a motion on the amendment?
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Second, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Item forty-one, special ordinance allowing special tax for weeds, group 2011-6, A is an amendment.
Second.
Public hearing on item forty-one was held on March 22nd. We have a motion and a second. No lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda item forty-two shall be held on third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item forty-three, ordinance approving a professional service agreement with Wade Trim Incorporated, providing field investigation, conceptual design, and preliminary design for Saddle Creek Retention Treatment Basin.
Public hearing on item forty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item forty-four, ordinance granting testive appropriating property located in the Logan Fontanelle East Area Redevelopment Plan.
Public hearing on item forty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Item forty-five, ordinance approving agreement for the sale of city-owned real property to enter into an agreement with the Habitat for Humanities of Omaha to convey property for use in the development of affordable housing located in the OIC Neighborhood Redevelopment Plan area.
Public hearing on item number forty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Item forty-six, ordinance except the bid of BMAC Corporation for Dumpster Service at District Two in Karen Park, Levi Carter Butler Building, NP Dodge Building, Tranquility Park, and Zirinsky Recreation Area.
Public hearing on item forty-six begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Forty-seven, ordinance approve unauthorized payment to HP Financial Services for the lease of one hundred and sixty-two new personal computers for the Omaha Public Library.
Public hearing on item forty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Pursuant to city council rule seven C, the public hearing on agenda items number forty-eight through fifty-one shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, thanks, everyone.